District one, Councilman Reals.
Present.
District two, Councilman Pescador.
Present.
District three, Councilman Leatham.
Present.
District four, Vice Mayor Stapleton.
Here.
District five, Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
District six, Councilman Shipley.
Here.
Mayor Camaros.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Shelley. I want to introduce Pastor Nick Jones. He'll lead us into invocation tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am so thankful to be here tonight. I'm thankful for all of you who serve our community, and especially tonight for those who serve with our firefighters and our police officers and first responders, all that. Because of them, I am here tonight, me and my daughter, and we're so thankful for that. And so, I actually wanted to read just one, two verses from Psalm 130. The psalmist says, "Out of the depths I cry to you, oh Lord. Oh Lord, hear my voice. Let your ear be attentive to my plea, my plea for your mercy." Let's pray. Father in heaven, I thank you so much for your kindness and blessings to each and every one of us, that every day, even when we don't recognize it, your grace guides us. Your hand provides for all of our needs. And Lord, we thank you for that here this night. Lord, I pray for everyone in this room, that in the various capacities that they serve this community, oh God, that you will guide and bless them, that they may do their jobs well. And remember, oh Lord, that they are here, like we all are, to serve one another, as Jesus told us to love one another, as you have loved us. And so, I pray that we will guide these proceedings here tonight, that you will bless the lives of each individual, and that we will seek your will as we seek to love and to serve the members of this community. So, we praise you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Freddie, can you lead us in the...
Yes, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with summary of current events, and I'll start with you, Mariano.
Remind everybody, today, we have a major winter storm affecting the western U.S. Please stay warm out there and be aware. It's always a surprise when we get snow on the ground here in Globe, Arizona, so we've gone from fire to flood to snowstorm, so be careful out there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mariano. Fernando?
I just want to say thank you to everybody that's worked on that stair project. That staircase has just turned out awesome. There's been a tremendous number of volunteers, the artists, everybody involved, and especially Regina and Thea, who kind of led that group to get that done. So, I just want to say a big thank you. It looks great.
Yes, it does. Thank you. Freddie?
Thank you, Mayor. I just kind of want to put a plug out there. I've already spoken to a couple people that are very close to the CCYS basketball season. There's over 200 kids playing basketball this season. And although the kids are having a great time playing, there's a shortage of coaching, I'm sorry, not coaching, but refereeing, just kind of managing the gym and the activities. So, if there's anybody out there that would like to work with some young kids and help out with CCYS, it's a five-week program. They've already started. If you need the dates and times, it's in the evenings. Linda, remind me, six to nine Tuesdays, Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays, and they're at various gyms, correct? Mostly Lee Cornegy. Lee Cornegy, High Desert. If you want to get ahold of me, and I can get you in touch with the right people, but if you have some free time and you want to get out there and get up and down the court like the kids do, please help out. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Freddie. Mike?
Which one? Okay. Mr. Mayor, nothing real important that I've been concerned with lately, but I would encourage people, even though everybody's downsizing with COVID issues, to be careful, wash your hands, wear masks if you need to. If you haven't got boosted, it sure would be nice if you would, but that's your choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Jesse?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to reiterate what Councilman Shipley said about the stair project. It looks absolutely amazing. And thank you to the Public Works and everybody else from the city that has helped as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to reiterate what Mariano said about the weather. We're fixing to get hit pretty hard, I guess, starting tonight. So, bundle up, stay warm, and be safe, first of all. And then, second of all, I'd like to welcome some new people. Kyle Chavez, and his better half, Paulina, right? Pauline, sorry. They're not new to Globe, but they're first timers at city council, so a young couple, so awesome. And Kyle told me that he was interested in the Citizens Academy.
Good.
So, I don't have those dates.
I do.
You do? Paul, thank you.
Freddie told me you might ask for him, so...
Yes.
So, the dates for this spring classes, oh, whoa, use of the fall classes. You had the...
I thought you had them, Paul.
Go ahead, microphone. Okay, I had the wrong date.
Classes will begin March the 23rd, and they'll go through May the 4th. We have seven sessions.
Seven sessions, and they're roughly two to three hours per session?
Six to eight, every Wednesday night.
Okay. Perfect. There you go.
We have applications here at City Hall, or I can email Lisa Mike.
Okay. And Mr. Vice Mayor remembers the council, I would like to add to that, that we have 15 slots designated for residents, three ambassador slots. But I will tell you that if we get close and we don't have the 15 slots filled with residents, we'll dip into ambassadors or people from outside. So, I would say that anybody that is willing, or is interested, get ahold of Shelley, get your name with her, and I'd rather see all 18 slots filled. We want to prioritize it for residents, at least those 15, but if we're a week away and we got people outside of the city that want to join, then let's get their names and get them on the list. So, the message is, if you're in the city, please apply. We'd love to have you. If you're outside of the city, put your name in with Shelley, and if there are empty slots within a week or less, we'll call you up and see if you still want to go through the process. And we still have those 15, or three ambassador slots for people who are from another partner organization.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Paul and Shelley. Appreciate it. And then, I'd like to shout out for PD, again, for everything that you guys do. You got a nice line of officers here, so thank you, guys. I appreciate everything that you guys do. Fire as well, chief. I saw and heard that we had a fire the other night on High Street. I could see that right out my bedroom window, so it's just like, wow. It was a total loss, correct? Really? And that was historic home on High Street. Okay. Well, thank you, guys, for what you... Everybody's safe. There were no fatalities or anything, so everybody got out safe. So, thank you. Then another shout out to John and your crew for Public Works. Again, everything's awesome. I've been driving around checking things out. The fields are really safe enough, so I know you guys do more than the fields. Thank you again for everything that you do. That's all I have here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I have a few announcements. Just a reminder, on the 24th, this Thursday, the Chamber of Commerce, they have a mixer, and that'll be at the Chamber of Commerce. On the 26th is Casino Royale, and that's a Rotary at the Center for the Arts. On March 4th, our first Friday event again is on the 4th. Skip back to the 2nd is a planning and zoning meeting for the Reyes Ridge development. And on March 5th is the Walk for Hope event that'll start here at the, here at City Hall on awareness, drug awareness. Just a little history on our COVID numbers for the week of February 12th through the 18th. Hila County is down about 50% in number of new cases, at 182 new cases. Globe had 51 this past week. Miami had three. Claypool had five new cases. San Carlos had 44 new cases. As far as Arizona, we're down to about 1,200 new cases daily, which is down about 60% from where we were a couple of weeks ago. And hospitalizations now are down below 1,300, and they were above 3,500. So, the numbers are going down, and that's good news. Again, just be safe out there. Consider to get vaccinated and boosted if you haven't already. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, yes, as a member of the Rotary, we're back with Casino Night and hoping to get a turnout. Starts at 5:00 and goes on to the evening. Not a lot of pre-ticket sales, so if you want to attend, just show up and you can pay at the door. The only other thing I wanted to share with you, there are a lot of meetings coming up. I pulled up my meeting list and it's busy, busy, but it is also the second week of the employee survey, and encourage all city employees, if they have not had a chance yet to fill the survey out, it's about 10 minutes, and it lets you share with you and with the city, and eventually counsel your thoughts and allow you to have a voice. So, I encourage everyone to fill that out. Mr. Mayor, members of council, that's all I have.
Thank you. We go to our first community call to the public. Do we have any cards? Or online email or phone? A reminder that these are comments made to the council, limited to three minutes. Any comments made cannot be responded by the council at that time, but can make recommendations towards staff to follow up. So, we do have one. I got Jess Bryant.
Mayor, council, I'll just be here before you again. Last time I was here, we spoke about redistricting, and so I'll just say on that, that we got destroyed in that. Was not good at all. And if you care to have a full report, I'd be happy to come before you and do that. It's another time. Tri-City had me do so previously, so I'd have to do it again. I'm actually here tonight because we are just over five months away from Independence Day. And the last couple of years, we really haven't done anything for obvious reasons. We just had what I was calling the parade rebellion. So, we just had a convoy through town and ended at the American Legion the last couple of years. But planning on for 2022 to have a full traditional Independence Day celebration. And the nice thing about this year is that Independence Day is on a Monday, so there's a full weekend in which events can be held. And I began work on the first Monday of the year, and I began reaching out to organizations and individuals around the community with ideas. And I've gotten a lot of great responses. People are very eager to develop events and activities for that weekend. And so, until those things become more firm, I don't want to go into any details of that, but I would just say that so I do want to point out that each event that may occur will be wholly owned and organized by that individual organization or people, and they will be the sole beneficiary of any funds raised for that. And the only thing I'm asking of them is that they coordinate me for scheduling purposes, and that we we all operate under the general umbrella of the Cobra Valley Independence Day celebration, so that it gives the appearance of a greater event for the weekend, community-wide, that we can market to the public and perhaps outside of the public. I briefly spoke to your Melissa Steele on the, the first Friday, will land on the Friday before the Independence Day this year, and had a short but very encouraging conversation. So, whatever activities the city develops for that day, I hope that we can we can kind of wrangle it all in as part of the greater marketing strategy for the Community Independence Day Celebration. We will have Monday, this is for certain, Monday morning, Independence Day, we will have the parade on Sullivan Street in Miami with related things, so the Legion Riders and Copper Cities Players and the Centennial Band and so forth. So, I hope to bring some more stuff back to you. If anybody has any more ideas of events that we might can organize for that weekend, feel free to reach out to me or reach out to any of you and and please, I hope you would contact me so that we can coordinate on that. But yeah, so hopefully we can have a grand celebration. And it's always been my dream, my ambition, I've been doing this since 2009, to make Globe Miami a destination place for Independence Day. So, maybe we can, this year, really start something grand that will bring people from out of town for that weekend. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you, Jess. We have special presentation and ceremonial matters. Item A is introduction of Lisa Fletcher, new deputy city clerk. Shelley?
Good evening, Mayor and council. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you the City of Globe first-ever deputy city clerk, Lisa Fletcher. Lisa comes to us from Heritage Health Care Center, where she dedicated 17 years of service and commitment. Lisa was hired there in 2004, and her proven performance in leadership and skills led her to the promotion of social services director in 2012, where she met the physical and emotional needs of more than 90 patients and their families. Lisa has brought a quality of respect and efficiency to the clerk's office as well as the City of Globe. Lisa's truly excited about, about city business. Her first duty was to attend the planning and zoning meeting with the Hill Street School. And into our fifth hour, well, maybe not that, I said, "Lisa, I understand if you need to go home and take care of things." She goes, "No, this is exciting." "Oh, okay." And she, she understands council's goals and our visions, and she's just truly excited to be a part of all of that. So, I'm just truly grateful to have Lisa in the clerk's office. She just brings a quality of detail and respect, and I'm just excited to have her work alongside me, so. I'm excited to be here. And I'm excited to help my community in a different way than what I did at Heritage. Thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome. There you go. You gotta go out there with her. I take it this is your family?
We hope so.
I do. How are you?
Good to see you.
Congratulations. Item B, Linda Adinetto, Economic and Community Development Director, will be recognized for five years of service with the City of Globe. Paul?
Mr. Mayor, we're going to ask the council to table this. Linda's family's unable to attend tonight, and we want to push it out when they're able to attend.
All right. We need a vote. We don't need a vote on that or just table?
No, I think because of presentation, you can, is that correct? They don't need to vote. No motion, just, we just leave it and we'll put it back on. But we had the math right, we just don't have the family.
Okay.
We have a family here that'll take pictures with you.
Photoshop it.
So, item C is Isami Erasima? Erasima? Taran, Globe Police Detective Two, will be recognized for five years of service with the City of Globe. Chief Walters?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Detective Taran, would you join me down at the podium, please?
Chief, I thought you were going to try the first name.
Erasima?
Huh? How do you say it?
Erasima?
Okay. All right.
I've been practicing for five years. Before we get started and celebrating a great achievement by Erasima, I just wanted to point out, to see if council could pick out the people that work night shift and the ones that work day shift. The beanie cap is the night shift guy, the ball caps and the cop-issued sunglasses are the day shift guys. Mayor and council, I started here a little over three years ago, and I was pleasantly surprised to find caliber people such as Erasima here when I got here. You'll see that in some cases, such as income, where some areas might have a lower median income than others. If you put that together, it makes everybody look average, but that's really not the case necessarily when it comes time to go to a bank and you want to build something in this portion of the community and you can say, this is the median income, this is what we have here. If you dilute it with the entire area, you know, you could be causing that developer some harm in trying to attempt to negotiate some financing or whatever the case may be. There are a number of scenarios where that may take place. So you'll see within the demographic section, a lot of individual statistics, but they are also, you know, added up so you can see how they affect the entire community. The next section has to do with our existing housing market. This has to do with number of housing units that we have here, the age of these housing units, what might be for sale. You know, we're looking at apartments, we're looking at single-family residents, we're looking at the whole spectrum of housing units within the community. And section four has to do with our housing gap analysis. As I said, it's not really a housing market study where you're gonna say, this is what we are proposing to build and we think we can sell them within six months and this is the price range and so on and so forth. We're looking at what our real gap is here, where we say, this is the number of people we have that need housing. These are the age groups that they are in. This is an actual number of housing we have. This is how many vacant units. And when it comes, one that's very apparent to many is looking at affordable housing. We have three or four real affordable housing complexes in this community, period. They have an X number of units and those units have been filled since these complexes were built. And they have waiting lists, sometimes that go years. And when you look at Hila County, who runs an affordable housing program, vouchers and so forth, they have a waiting list sometimes of a couple of years before people can get into a housing situation that they can afford. So, you know, that's one area you can point to and say, housing in that particular variety is of great need. But at this point in time, I guess I should wait for the train.
Yeah, I think you should, Bob.
I didn't know if that was a signal that my time was up. Maybe there's some elevator music we can play while? Okay, so at this point in time, and I think you would all agree, just without even doing a study, that housing is needed at all segments, in all areas, all age groups, all price ranges, and not just in this area, but across the state and across the country. It's just probably one of the number-one issues that communities have to deal with. So when you talk about trying to take a look at where we are, what our gaps, I will tell you right now, our gap is everywhere. If you're a developer and you want to do something in this community, build housing, throw a dart at the dartboard and build that because you will have no problem. I mean, that's just my opinion, but you can take a look at the statistics yourself, you can talk to experts. We've been to a number of presentations by economists and others across the state and even some across the country. And it's like listening to the same script every time. We are all facing similar issues. It's not something that we have to take a guess about. Then the last couple of sections have to do with land use and policy review. One of the items in the scope of work was to take a look at communities' zoning laws, building codes, other things, make some recommendations concerning how you could make some changes to allow more housing, make it easier for people to put in housing and so forth. As we've participated in those types of activities, not only in this area in our region, but elsewhere, you know that this is our recommendation, what you should do to change your zoning ordinance because that's not really our business. There are a number of issues that affect those types of things. So what we did instead was basically give you a list of items to consider when you take a look at this. Now, the best people to take a look at your zoning ordinance are going to be the people who live here. It's going to be your planning and zoning commission, they're going to be your staff that work in that area. It's going to be you gentlemen that are reviewing those things as well. You know the temperature, the heartbeat of this community, you know what people are talking to you about, what the hot spots are, what the hot buttons are for people. And so, you know, for us to sit here and say, this is what you need to do in the City of Globe is not where we feel we should be. So giving you some ideas as you approach that process of what you can do to look at, what's happened in other communities, you know? And I'm not talking about just affordable housing. I'm talking about being able to make better use of the land that you have available. Sometimes it's increasing density. Sometimes it's allowing a little more flexibility in how property is developed. Sometimes it's, you know, saying, no, this is not the place to do some of these things. It's not all about allowing and opening the gate so that you can do more and more. It's about just being a little more flexible in how you're approaching things. You know, if you look at your zoning code like pretty much everybody else's, you'll see residential zoning that are R1, R2, R3, R4, R5. You know, there are situations where we felt in this area, housing should be restricted to this number of square feet per lot and this number of houses per acre and so on and so forth. But over here, it's okay if you put a couple more houses per acre. And over here, if you want horses, that's okay. And, you know, that was the logic in how we put these things together and that's great. But as times change and as we begin to see the property within our boundaries, the limits that that provides, we begin to start thinking a little bit differently about how we do some of those things. I'm not saying you allow horses everywhere, but there are times where you need to rethink some of those lot size requirements or setback requirements or other things. You know, building materials today are much safer than they were 40, 50, 80 years ago. Building separations can change, building codes have changed. But a lot of times, our zoning ordinances don't always keep up with some of those things. So as I said, your professionals are the best way to go through these things, take a look at that, get feedback from your community, your contractors, your developers, your residents. Let them give you some feedback on how to deal with some of that. And look at the needs of your seniors. It's a growing population, it's going to be for a number of years. Sometimes they want smaller, less maintenance. They don't want that single-family home that's 2,000 square feet and, you know, has a quarter acre. Now, if I'm 30 years old and I have three kids, I might. So you have to kind of take a look at those things. Anyway, that section gives you a little bit more along the lines of considerations. And lastly, the last section has to do with goals and objectives. Again, for us to sit and say, this is what the goals of this community should be when it comes to housing are a little bit iffy for us to say. So we essentially took a step back and said, what would be the next phase of this? And that's where the planning comes in. That's where putting together a community housing plan is really where you need to focus your attention, in my opinion. Getting together with your neighboring communities, the people in this study area and saying, okay, this is our situation, we know what our issues are for the most part, you know, are there other things we've missed? What can we do to address the gaps that we have? If it's affordable housing, if it's senior housing, if it's first-time home buyers, whatever those things may be, what can we do to make sure that we are being as receptive as possible without giving away the farm? We want to make it easy to be done. Now, I will tell you one thing, because this was, again, this is just my opinion, but looking at all of this data, putting this stuff together and living here for the majority of my life, you know, one of the big opportunities we have in this community is just revisiting these older properties. We have a number of properties out there that are dilapidated, that are vacant, that are even a hazard in many cases, that are in good neighborhoods with utilities right to the property line, you know, everything you need for a development. If we could encourage that type of restoration, you know, go in there and many of these homes are not ready or able to be renovated, per se. It's more along the lines of raising it, putting something new. But going into a neighborhood that has six or eight, 10 lots that are of no use, but pretty much have all of infrastructure you need in place, and replacing those with newer homes can make all the difference. And it makes your job a lot easier because you're not now looking at a new subdivision plot. You're not sitting here having tons of planning and zoning meetings and public hearings to decide if this should be developed and this should be the density, do we really have the infrastructure to throw that that?
may take place. So you'll see within the demographic section, a lot of individual statistics, but they are also, you know, added up. So you can see how they affect the entire community. The next section has to do with our existing housing market. This has to do with number of housing units that we have here, the age of these housing units, what might be for sale, you know, those we're looking at apartments, we're looking at single family residents, we're looking at the whole spectrum of of housing units within the community. And section four has to do with our housing gap analysis. As I said, it's not really a housing market study where you're going to say, this is what we are proposing to build, and we think we can sell them within six months, and this is the price range, and so on and so forth. We're looking at what our real gap is here, where we say, this is a number of people we have that need housing. These are the age groups that they are in. This is an actual number of housing we have. This is how many vacant units. And when it comes, one that's very apparent to many is looking at affordable housing. We have three or four real affordable housing complexes in this community, period. They have an X number of units, and those units have been filled since these complexes were built. And they have waiting lists, sometimes that go years. And when you look at Gila County, who runs a, an affordable housing program, vouchers and so forth, they have a waiting list sometimes of a couple of years before people can get into a housing situation that they can afford. So, you know, that's one area you can point to and say, housing in that particular variety is is of great need. But at this point in time, I guess I should wait for the train.
Yeah, I think you should, Bob.
I didn't know if that was a signal that my time was up. Maybe there's some elevator music we can play while. Okay, so at this point in time, and I think you would all agree, just without even doing a study, that housing is needed at all segments, in all areas, all age groups, all price ranges, and not just in this area, but across the state and across the country. It's, it's just the probably one of the number one issues that communities have to deal with. So when you talk about trying to take a look at where we are, what our gaps, I will tell you right now, our gap is everywhere. If you're a developer and you want to do something in this community to build housing, throw a dart at the dartboard and build that, because you will have no problem. I mean, that's just my opinion. But you can take a look at the statistics yourself. You can talk to experts. We've been to a number of presentations by economists and others across the state, and even some across the country. And it's like listening to the same script every time. We are all facing similar issues. It's not something that we have to take a guess about. Then the last couple of sections have to do with land use and policy review. One of the items in the scope of work was to take a look at communities zoning laws, building codes, other things, make some recommendations concerning how you could make some changes to allow more housing, make it easier for people to put in housing and so forth. As we've participated in those types of activities, not only in this area in our region, but elsewhere, it can be a very difficult situation to begin those types of discussions, to sit and let you know that this is our recommendation, what you should do to change your zoning ordinance, because that's, that's not really our business. There are a number of issues that affect those types of things. So what we did instead was basically give you a list of items to consider when you take a look at this. Now, the best people to take a look at your zoning ordinance are going to be the people who live here. It's going to be your planning and zoning commission. They're going to be your staff that work in that area. It's going to be you gentlemen that are reviewing those things as well. You know, the temperature, the heartbeat of this community, you know what people are talking to you about, what the hotspots are, what the hot buttons are for people. And so, you know, for us to sit here and say, this is what you need to do in the City of Globe is not where we feel we should be. So giving you some ideas as you approach that process of what you can do to look at, what's happened in other communities, you know, and I'm not talking about just affordable housing. I'm talking about being able to make better use of the land that you have available. Sometimes it's increasing density. Sometimes it's allowing a little more flexibility in how property is developed. Sometimes it's, you know, saying, no, this is not the place to do some of these things. It's not all about allowing and opening the gate so that you can do more and more. It's about just being a little more flexible in how you're approaching things. You know, if you look at your zoning code like pretty much everybody else's, you'll see residential zoning that are R1, R2, R3, R4, R5, you know, there, there are situations where we felt in this area, housing should be restricted to this number of square feet per lot, and this number of houses per acre, and so on and so forth. But over here, it's okay if you put a couple more houses per acre. And over here, if you want horses, that's okay. And, you know, that's, that was the logic in how we put these things together, and that's great. But as times change, and as we begin to see the property within our boundaries, the limits that that provides, we begin to start thinking a little bit differently about how we do some of those things. I'm not saying you allow horses everywhere. But there are times where you need to rethink some of those lot size requirements, or setback requirements, or other things. You know, building materials today are much safer than they were 40, 50, 80 years ago. Building separations can change, building codes have changed. But a lot of times, our zoning ordinances don't always keep up with some of those things. So, as I said, your professionals are the best way to go through these things. Take a look at that, get feedback from your community, your contractors, your developers, your, your residents. Let them give you some feedback on how to, to deal with some of that. And look at the needs of your seniors. It's, it's a growing population. It's going to be for a number of years. Sometimes they want smaller, less maintenance. They don't want that single family homeless 2,000 square feet and, you know, has a quarter acre. Now, if I'm 30 years old and I have three kids, I might. So you have to kind of take a look at those things. Anyway, that section gives you a little bit more along the lines of considerations. And lastly, the last section has to do with goals and objectives. Again, for us to sit and say, this is what the goals of this community should be when it comes to housing are a little bit iffy for us to say. So we essentially took a step back and said, what would be the next phase of this? And that's where the planning comes in. That's where putting together a community housing plan is really where you need to focus your attention, in, in my opinion. Getting together with your neighboring communities, the people in this study area, and saying, okay, this is our situation. We know what our issues are, for the most part. You know, are there other things we've missed? What can we do to address the gaps that we have? If it's affordable housing, if it's senior housing, if it's first time home buyers, whatever those things may be, what can we do to make sure that we are being as receptive as possible, without giving away the farm? We want to make it easy to be done. Now, I will tell you one thing, because this was, again, this is just my opinion, but looking at all of this data, putting this stuff together, and living here for the majority of my life, you know, one of the big opportunities we have in this community is, is just revisiting these older properties. We have a number of properties out there that are dilapidated, that are vacant, that are even a hazard in many cases, that are in good neighborhoods, with utilities right to the property line, you know, everything you need for a development. If we could encourage that type of restoration, you know, go in there, and, and many of these homes are not ready or able to be renovated, per se. It's more along the lines of raising it, putting something new. But going into a neighborhood that has six or eight, 10 lots that are of no use, but pretty much have all of infrastructure you need in place, and replacing those with newer homes can make all the difference. And it, it makes your job a lot easier, because you're not now looking at a new subdivision plat. You're not sitting here having tons of planning and zoning meetings and public hearings to decide if this should be developed, and this should be the density. Do we really have the infrastructure to throw at that? These are areas that are already developed. And if we can take a look at those, I think that's really a good opportunity. So as you have conversations with people who are interested in those things, you know, that may be one of the areas that you focus on. As Linda said, this is a review document. I don't really see a lot of this information changing, because it's statistical in nature. It's, it's gathered from census information, university data, some of the demographic and information that we collect and disaggregate at CAG and other organizations. And it is a snapshot in time. Now, a lot of data we used was from the, the latest census we had at the time. And the census 2020 took place, kind of as we were wrapping this up. And some people have asked, you know, is that going to change a lot of things? Not really. If you had seen a lot of changes in the last few years, you would probably just intuitively know that, wow, these numbers may not be accurate today. But there's also some discussion out there as to the accuracy of the 2020 census, because it was done a little differently than a lot of the other censuses were done because of the pandemic and the situations that that caused. So we have some experts out that are saying, you know, wait a minute, this 2020 data is not as good as you think it might be. And we have others that say, well, it's the best we have, and this is what we use. We use the, the 1990, excuse me, 2019 projections. So, you know, the data we had was as new as possible. Everything is referenced in here for that. And if anybody wants to check how the 2020 sizes up to that, you know, we can get you that additional information, or we can show you how to find that out yourself. So with that, Mr. Mayor, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Questions or comment for Robert?
Go ahead, Freddie. Thank you. Mr. Mossen, thank you so much for your presentation and all this information gathered, and as well as CAG. Obviously, you know, the city and this, this council has been very proactive about looking at housing, where and how we can. I think this is a wealth of information, and it'll be a great tool. I really believe it'll be a great tool for our staff to, to pursue those, those avenues of, of housing and how we can best manage our needs. So thank you so much, and thank you to CAG.
Thank you.
Fernando?
Mr. Mossen, I know that you mentioned that there was a lot of opportunities for infill, especially with some of our abandoned and dilapidated properties that are just not, nothing's going on. Are you aware of any policies or steps that have been taken by other cities to address that type of situation?
There are a few. Now, a lot of communities don't necessarily focus on certain things, but some of them have really put together task forces and so on that approach certain areas. Infill is one of those specialty areas that, you know, most big developers, they're looking to come in and put property. They want to build house, 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 so they want to build apartments. They want to concentrate on numbers. The most success we've seen with infill projects have to do with smaller developers that might put in one, two, three houses at a time. Even encouraging those particular property owners to allow their properties to be developed. In this community, we have a lot of absentee ownership. A lot of these houses that are abandoned out there belong to somebody in Delaware who's a great grandson of somebody that owned the place. You know, they pay $50 a year in property taxes. They don't really ever been out here. But there have been some efforts by some communities to actually compile lists of those properties, get in contact with those owners, and begin to negotiate how they can get those properties back onto the, the, the public worlds. Can they get them sold? Can they be involved? Some communities have put together actual nonprofit groups that have made offers on these properties, and purchased them from these property owners, and then turned around and put them in a community trust, so that the development costs come down, and those properties are then built upon under a lease agreement with that nonprofit. And that keeps the development costs lower. They don't have to buy the land. That land is something that's contributed by this organization. And that they can also put covenants and restrictions on those purchases, so that people who buy it the first time don't see a huge increase in value, make a bunch of money, and walk away. They can put restrictions on how much value those homes can accumulate year to year, so that they stay relatively affordable for a 15, 20 year period. So it's not as popular, it's not as, it's not done by individuals as much. It usually is more of a community effort. But it is something that, you know, City of Globe, Town of Miami could really get in there and begin to say, look, this is what we can do to help unstuck, unstick this situation. Between Globe Miami, we have a lot of properties that were on septic tanks, you know, moving that system forward where we can get some wastewater lines into those actual areas will free up some of that property, because we, we lost a number of residents in that area of the community, just because they can't go back and put anything there until we can figure out how to get them sewage.
Mariano?
Bob, just for your information, last week, the county has been sponsoring a, a healthcare mapping study. And the mayor was on Zoom, and I was there personally. And every piece of information, like you've brought forth, and in other demographics and statistics, point out a number of things about this region, that that committee is using to map healthcare and its availability, and the general health of the population here. One of it is housing, which does affect health. And the point I made last week was, 35 miles away, you have a migrant population, the snowbirds, who've sold out, bought the RV, and they show up every November in the valley, and they are willing to move for health, because the weather's great in the valley, and so on, and so on. And I noticed in the demographics and statistics, and part of this study as well, is that we do have a, a retired population here, grew up here, got their pension, and they're staying here. And they're not migrating. And yet, 35 miles away, you see the opposite happening. I don't know how to reach people to encourage them to downsize. My parents built a brand new home when my father was retired from the mines. And it's been in place now for 33 years, brand new home. They have no intention of moving. They want to stay in their home till they die. And I'm doing everything I can to make that possible and happen. But it, it ties up the housing in the region. I'm not complaining. I'm just saying, here's a unique demographic. It exists in our community. And does it affect health? Sure. And so, we as a council need to find ways to address these issues, and try to find those, those niches of housing that we can improve. And we do have a pretty good strategic plan that guides us in that. But every piece and puzzle to the puzzle that we're trying to solve here, it really helps us. So I thank you for doing this study and helping out on that. The demographics, the statistics, our departments are using as they make presentations for grants in the various projects that we're doing. I appreciate that research and information. It helps us going into the future. So thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, could I comment to that real quick? So we do have that, that is one of the phenomenons, you know, is aging in place. We, we used to have a cycle where I sized, you went to a smaller house. Your big house got open for a family to move in. Well, now, especially with housing prices, you know, it's hard to afford to downsize, but it's hard to even find one to downsize to. So it's not always about building that family neighborhood where you have these big homes. Maybe it's about building homes that, you know, older adults can downsize into freeing up those family neighborhoods for families. There, as I said at the very beginning, pretty much every level of housing is stuck at this point in time, because there just is not enough of anything, and people are reluctant to leave what they have. You can make a lot of money right now if you sell your house, but you're going to pay a lot of money to get another one, if you find one.
You've got to have another place to go to once you sell it.
We're going to land.
Oh, yeah. Very good. Just, it's a really good report. There's a lot of information. I was skimming through it today. I mean, it's something you have to sit down and really concentrate on what you're doing. But there's some really good information. I think there was one section in there I read that there were like 1,700 vacant properties in Globe, or 1,400. And I thought, my God, where the hell are all these at? You know, I mean, there's a lot of availability in there. If you can get to them and get them renovated, torn down, whatever, and rebuilt, you know. But like Fernando says, it'd be a good way to do it. But there's so many legal avenues that you got to get straightened out first. But it's good information. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robertson, this is a review copy, and or maybe this to Linda, how, where, when is the deadline for comments or changes on this draft?
Yeah, that would be up to you, Mr. Mayor, as far as the community is, what you would like to do before you adopt something like that.
There are some changes or some information I'd like to discuss, but I guess it, we still have time to do that.
Yes. And there have been some revisions to this already in, in certain areas. You know, we had some gaps in permit numbers, some other things like that, that have been filled in at a newer version. So some of those comments that come in may have already been addressed.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I, I did want to comment real quickly on council membership, please comment. And I know that SB 1634, which is a league sponsored, 21 strategies to help with affordable housing, we'll probably learn a little bit more about that. This is in response to the, the Affordable Housing Bill that, that we, we had issues with. That's going to require, if it passes, some modification of our code. Our, a lot of our code is, is in line with, I think, that. But there, I'm sure there'll be some modifications. And I think at that time would be a good time to, to look at ways we can free up the, I know the, the tax, the, the housings on the, the tax rolls, and, and trying to get those properties back into the market. If we can look at those strategies, I'm curious about the one that, that you had talked about, the nonprofit, you know, funding that. But I, I think it, it is definitely on our, something should be on our radar that we figure out how to get these 1,400 properties back into, you know, back into the market or built on, or, or get them from, I mean, it's, it's a double win. You, you take care of a dilapidated property, and you create a, a new place for new family workers to, to live. And then the only other thing is, Robert has a little bit of news. Robert has reached north for some higher level employment. Robert, do you want to talk about your, your move?
I didn't come for that. But since you introduced it, I guess I have to. So yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I am moving on from CAG. I've accepted a city manager position in Alaska. This will be my
Wow, that is north.
My third stint in city management. You'd think I'd have learned by now, but so I'm, I'm looking forward to that. It's kind of a exciting opportunity. But, you know, still a resident of this area. I'll be back and forth from time to time. And you'll have my contact information if you want to follow up on any of this. You know, you can go through Andre at CAG, or you can reach out to me, and I'll see what I can do to provide you additional information, because there's a lot out there. A lot of communities have done things positive in nature towards housing and other issues that, you know, it's, you don't always have to reinvent the wheel. You just have to kind of know who's got new tires and see what they did. So I appreciate that. I'm heading out next Monday. I have meetings already in Anchorage on Monday and Tuesday. I'm not in Anchorage. I'm out on the southwest coast of Alaska. It's a community named Dillingham. It's at the mouth of the largest state park in Alaska. It's probably the salmon fishing capital of the world. They pulled in over 63 million salmon last season. People come from all over the world to fish there. You know someone there now?
Yes.
So if you're, if you're traveling in that area, you know, you have to fly your boat. That's how you get there. So.
Are they going to allow you to be a snowbird city manager?
No, no, it won't be that frequently. I'll be, but I will be back and forth when I
Congratulations.
Yes, very good.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Go to the consent calendar. Matters listed in the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. Public hearing items are designated with an asterisk. Prior to discussion of the consent agenda, the mayor will ask whether any member of the public wishes to remove a public hearing item for separate consideration. Members of the council and/or staff may remove any item for separate consideration. Item A, consideration of waiver of section 2-4-10, prior discussion ruled to allow action on the balance of the consent agenda. Accounts payable: $616,464.11. Consideration of approval of council minutes, February 8, 2022, meeting minutes. Consideration of agreements and purchases less than 25,000. Consideration to approve fiscal year 2021, 2022, second quarter distribution of bed tax funds in the amount of $9,199.39 to Gila County Historical Society from account number 10-51-51925, General Fund Community Organizations, Gila County Historical Society bed tax. Consideration to appoint Matthew Storms to the Board of Adjustments Commission. Consideration to appoint Jamie Green to the Library Committee. Consideration to approve the special event liquor license for the Globe Rotary Club 7th Annual Dominion Royal Casino Night that will be held at the Co-Rally Center for the Arts on February 26. And consideration to approve the special event liquor application for the 13th Annual Globe Stock Celebration that will be held at the Huddle on February 25, 2022, through February 27, 2022. Do we have anybody from the public, the staff, or council that wants to remove any of these items for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item number D, please.
D?
Listen, David.
Okay.
And Paul, if you could elaborate.
Yeah, well, and Mr. Mayor, nothing from, from us, but when we approve the consent, we'll come back to that.
Come back to that one, yeah. Mr. Mayor, if there are no other comments or questions, I motion that we item D for further discussion and accept the rest of the agenda as read. Second? Motion, a second for approval of the consent agenda as read minus item D. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Any abstaining? Motion pass. So we'll go back to item D. Item D is Consideration to appoint Matthew Storms to the Board of Adjustments Commission.
Go ahead, Mike.
And so the, oh, go ahead.
Who all serves on that board? Right now, there, surely there's five, five members?
Yes, we have five members.
And who are they? Do you know?
Uh, let's see, Lisa Brazil serves, John Wong is the chairman of the Board of Adjustments, Ryan Genu, John Lowes, and Diana Montgomery presently serve. And we, there are seven positions on that board, and, and five of them are filled right now.
Two are available.
Yes.
And how many applicants do we have right now? Just the one?
Just, just the one, man.
Excuse me. And Shelley, this is a newly established board that we did in the past year, I think it was, that we didn't really have one. And I think they've had like two, maybe two hearings or something?
Yes, sir. It's been maybe about three to four hearings.
Three to four.
But council served as the Board of Adjustment in his
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's important to have a, as we go forward, to have a standalone Board of Adjustment. They are the, the final stop. If, if somebody goes through P and Z, and/or council, and, and they are denied something, and, and it's not to judge the denial, it's to judge the, the decision made by staff and, and appeal that. And so they consider that they were treated equitably or fairly as others have been treated. But it is a, a check and balance. And so it's a standalone board that way. It, it is not often used, but it is only appealable to the Superior Court. If, if the city had a problem with what the Board of Adjustment did, we would have to take that to court. If the, the applicant had a problem with the Board of Adjustment, they would have to take that to court. But it is, it is a narrower version, because it's not on the merits of the request, but the application But it is, it is a narrower version because it's not on the merits of the request, but the application of the rules by the city.
That answers my question. Thank you, Paul, and Charlie. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent agenda with item D as read.
Second. So we have a motion of second for approval of item D. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass. So we open a public hearing for the twenty twenty-four redistricting map select map selection. So we'll open that public hearing and we'll have a staff presentation, a public comment period also before closing the public hearing.
Now, Mr. Mayor, we're checking the phones, we're checking the emails. And we've had, up to this point, we've had no public comment on the redistricting. And I don't see anybody in the audience who's approaching on the the redistricting.
Okay, so if we have no, we have no staff presentation, we have no public comment, then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing then.
Mayor, thank you.
Go to new business. Item A, council will discuss and possibly approve a professional service contract number PS dash two zero two two dash zero zero one five with Walt Bratton for recreation and grant administration in support of the opening and first season operation of the Globe Community Pool and request to transfer forty-eight thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and seventeen cents from from account number one zero dash five five zero dash five three zero 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 administrative contingency into administering consultants. Account number ten dash five five dash five one two two five and request to waive section two dash four dash ten A prior discussion rule.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and and we have Walt here and he'll speak in a second. But as we work so hard to to get the contract for the pool, the construction of the pool, the funders lined up for the pool. One of those expectations is is that we would open the pool on July fourth and and that it would be operational. The the actual operating of a a community pool like that, we don't have as much long history on that. And so we were we're looking for ways we could bring somebody on board and and make sure that we we opened it properly. It was timely and it and it was done professionally. Through a series of events, we we became aware of Walt Bratton and had a conversation. He's got a long history, twenty-three years of doing parks and rec services in different municipalities as a both a masters and a bachelor's as a masters as ASU. So I'm sorry about that. But but and he's got, he's got during his masters, he had spent time up here in Globe and so familiar. And so and so we were talking and and we believe that I've already done a short term contract with with Walt under five thousand to get some initial information done. And and we are here tonight asking council to support a medium term contract. This is, it's, it's a nine month contract, but it it has two, three month additions. We're budgeting it for the first five months because if it goes into, it will build the money into the budget if council so chooses. We will continue the funding. So in in essence, right now, it's five months will be the what you're approving the funding for. And we've negotiated, it's a very similar to the Dana Burkhart contract. This is a very professional director level person that's going to come in and not run the pool, but set up the pool to be run. He's going to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row. I shouldn't use word ducks, our swans in a row, so we can I didn't see the swan here. Yeah, okay, swans in a row, so we can, we can open on time. We have the train personnel, we have the the pool managers, work with Public Works on the on the maintenance side, the certain certifications, the budget, because we need to budget for this, for the 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 opening of the pool. We'll be in the next budget year, and so he's very, very familiar for that. There's a lot of expertise that he brings and knowledge that that we're unaware of and and we're happy to have him as our partner through this. Once it's open, he set the the goal for having the first season and leaving it in good hands. So the next year, we don't have to come back to this level of person. We can have our our structures, our policies, our our practices, all documented and and knowledge ready to go and be able to run this for multiple years. But this would cover the the startup of the school, of the school, the startup of the the pool and possibly the 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 first year season of running and gets in good shape. Again, our the city and the hospital and the funders want to see this hit the ground running. And so we had an interesting conversation with Walt. He said, so when when's it opening? I said, July fourth. He said, when they putting water in it? It's like July one and it's like three days. So, so Walt, go ahead and and talk a little bit about yourself and kind of some of the things that that we were asking you to work on and your expertise.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Walt Bratton, professional services consulting. I'm a retired Parks and Recreation Director. I grew up in the Pacific Northwest. My father was a Parks and Recreation Director, so it's in my blood since I was five years old. I grew up in a small town, very similar to the size and scope and demographic as Globe. And I'm happy to be here and I'm looking forward to hitting the ground running and getting my scope of work done.
So he will, Walt will be working on things like these, life, lifeguards, partnerships with the school, partnership with the mines, partnership with the and and getting everything set up, again, the budget. So any questions for myself or for Walt, we're we're here.
Can you swim, sir?
Yes.
I never thought I'd ask that.
See, I asked the hard questions here, sir. Paul gave me the story how he kind of backed into knowing you. And Paul always lands on his feet, I must say. He was very excited about bringing you on board because of your qualifications and I'm really pleased that we lucked out. We have to hit the ground running and I must say, do everything you can to know what the the architect and the company is doing to install that thing, because you're going to be asked a lot of questions about how everything works. I was just asked yesterday, Mr. Mayor, about the pool. And I said, by the way, do you know it's heated? And this has been in all the papers and publicized and they were stunned to hear there was going to be a heated pool. So I caution you to to learn everything you can because you are going to be hit broadside by all kinds of general questions like that. And you may be asked if you know how to swim, so I'm just giving you a heads up. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Jesse, go ahead.
What do you anticipate the season being?
We're looking from July fourth to basically when they stop coming, about September. Walt, what are we, what are we looking at?
I would say the end of September. It all comes down to the recruitment of guards and keeping staff. As long as you can keep the proper amount of staff on payroll, then you can keep the pool open. So lifeguards are tend to known to go back to college, go back to school or quit with short notice. So we need to make sure that we keep that retention as much as possible.
Does this contract then cover the entire, whatever, our
If if the council chooses to allow us to place additional funding in the budget in the budget cycle. Right now, it would go to July twenty-second. And then we we would make that decision if council and staff recommends it and council is happy with the the process so far. We would, we would cover that and add that into the budget. But it it's awkward to 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 ask you now to schedule all the way in. I think it's just a good, a good marking point. We get it open and then decide. I I fully anticipate that we'll go to September. And and I think going to the question about coverage and keeping it open, I would, I would rather see us keep try to find a core group of of lifeguards and even if we have to lessen the hours, keep it open. My my personal commitment, professional commitment was if people are willing to come, then we should have the pool open. And and that's what we're shooting for. And it'll be, we'll have to work to figure out a way to make sure that we have those lifeguards. So it depends, like, say, if they're if they're college students or high school teachers, we have limitations. But I think we we have a bigger pool that we can pull from and find some people who are willing to work further into the season.
Ready, go ahead. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bratton, in in your capacity, will, would you be able to, after you've gone through the process and and land, basically formulate a plan on where we are and where we need to be? Do you have the capacity to forecast where we'll need to be in the years to come regarding budgeting purposes, O and M costs, and even some CIP costs?
That would be one of the goals.
Okay.
Too early to tell.
Right.
Right now, couple more months, we should be able to discuss that.
Okay, good, good.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, one thing I did want to say is is there's been a clear demarcation between operations, which is the the season and maintenance, which is a year round position. And and so we're still working with John and Public Works because they'll, we'll have to make sure that this is a large investment, just like any, anything that that Public Works does. It's, they'll be the full time people, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, they they keep the pool, you know, clean, operating, serviced, so that when the season comes, then we gear up with the staffing. At least that's what we're looking at now as as how this will come. So we can, we can get everything ready, open and and run it and then close on time. But it will be seasonal workers or the, under the umbrella where Walt will be working. And then communicating with the the maintenance side, just advising just based on his expertise.
Question.
Go ahead, Mike.
So, so Walt, you'll be working directly with the contractors?
Walt is is sitting as a a technical advisor when when the the team is working with the with the contractors. Right now, Jerry is a project manager and Linda and I sit in on some of those, Linda more than I.
Walt drops in below you guys?
Yeah, Walt would drop in and he's an, he's an asset to us to have. We were, we were sitting in a in a meeting talking about ticketing systems and lockers and and towels and things like that. And and that is the kind of questions when we're doing that kind of setup where Walt can bring his expertise. Now, Walt, you've done large construction projects, right?
Yes, I've completed over forty million dollars of CIPA in my career.
Forty million, yeah. And so he's, he's overseen those projects and he, he gives us, he gives, he texts me some insights sometimes, but he's kind of, he's our voice of experience. But he's not the prime, he's not being hired to manage the construction project.
No, but but I mean, he'll have input into some of the development though.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
As to what he sees.
We've, we've already had him in on the team meetings when we're working with the hospital and and structural.
Okay.
Hello, Walt. Nice to meet you. I met you this evening for the first time, so it's very nice to meet you. I know forty-eight thousand and change seems like a lot of money, but we got to look at the big picture. We're spending four point three million?
There's about, there's a project value is about four point three million. That's through our partners, the hospital, ourselves.
Everybody.
The the value of this project is is high.
So I think that it's important that we have your expertise to help us open this and keep it open. Because I don't think anybody locally has that capability to do that, really.
Not, not that
There's a lot to opening this pool. And we're right around the corner. So I think it's a a good opportunity to have Walt on board.
Yeah, it was, we're very, very happy to have him on board and he's very excited to to be part of this.
Good. Thank you, Walt. That's all I have, man.
Thank you, Mike. I have a question on the, anybody else? I have a question on the, it says administration, grant administration. Walt, are you also going to be doing any grant writing to assist us in this process also?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna work with Linda tomorrow and we'll start doing one in the afternoon tomorrow, so yes.
Yeah, no, if he can, it's always if a consultant can pay for his contract, that's always a good thing.
Exactly. And I guess the way I look at it, I guess, Paul, is that this is a huge, like Mike Vice Mayor said, that this is a big in Denver that that we are going through. And and you know, it started small with a million that we're going to do and with all the stakeholders and everybody interested. It has grown, you know, four times that amount. And I think people want to see us be successful. We want to be successful. And I think, you know, as as we get into it, is is required more time, just like anything else we're doing. We're seeing more activity within our community and development and our development services team is busy. I mean, we need to look forward at at maybe doing consultants and maybe in the future having full time staff that's that does this additional work. But in order to be successful, we're going to have to look at the costs and 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 bringing people, more personnel on to get things done.
Council, Linda always says first impressions last and, you know, and and if the, if we can hit the ground running with our ticketing system up, our our bands, our lifeguards ready to go, safety plans in place, certifications in place. I think everyone will be a lot, have a lot more confidence that the kids will be safe, that the the project is in well, is in good hands. That is the one thing that that Linda has promoted throughout this is in in myself and and in council, that we're the entity that's willing to take on the operations and maintenance of this. And we got the maintenance side down, we will be working with with our side. But but the operations has been the 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 area where we need this boost. And and again, this is just our first year up, get it rolling, get it going, get us to our first season.
And I think in the process, we need to support our Public Works and John, because I know they're going to have additional, you know, it's the responsibility of just the chlorine and and the different chemicals that go along with the pool and maintenance. I mean, the training, we have to support all those operations, so.
No, and we're gonna, we had some conversations and we're gonna have some more about just how we're going to make sure, is it John's, John's responsibility of every, every time we we land a a big project, John gets a big smile on his face because he knows that he's maintenance. And so, but but help is on the way. So anyways, we, we, like I say, we're always trying to grow our our Public Works department. We added, made three offers. What's that?
He's saying ten.
Ten.
Help is on the way.
No, it's, I will
Where is it?
No, but 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 again, we're, we're, I will, I will tell you this. We're not just going to take somebody who has existing responsibility and say, oh, by the way, now we're going to add the pool. Okay, this is going to be a dedicated, one, maybe two, depending on what we we need position. So it's, it's not fair because we undercut everything.
Mike, go ahead.
And I would hope with with Walt on board that he'll be able to kind of present a plan for John to, when the, when he finishes, there'll be a plan for a recreational department operation. And I'm sure Walt's worked on that kind of structure.
Right, well, and you've seen all the very various versions. And so we'll have to figure out how this matches what he's done before. But we do see a split between operations and maintenance, because that was just the way we have. And and so Walt's here to to advise and and offer to, you know, what he's seen before, work. But I, but I I will tell you that it's John's department's responsible, it'll be John's decisions how we do that. The other thing, we both will, all will receive a set of operation instructions from Structural Al that we're going to have to interpret, learn and get taught. So there will be some training from Structural Al to whoever we we put that John puts in in charge of the maintenance side.
I just want to thank you for coming on board. I think it's invaluable to have some outside's eyes and expertise come in to train our staff and know how this is supposed to happen and the way it's supposed to be done correctly. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion if we're done with comments and questions. And also like to maybe have a a GoFundMe account so we can buy John about a dozen shorts and trunks, the whole Hawaiian style. Because
I've got some that might fit you, John.
Yeah, in all seriousness, I'd like to make a motion to approve the professional service contract number PS twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one five with Walt Bratton of for recreation and grant administration in support of the opening of the first season operations of the Globe Community Pool and request to transfer forty-eight thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and seventeen cents from ten dash fifty-five dash fifty-three zero 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 admin contingency into admin consultants, ten dash five five dash five one two two five. And we crest, request to waive the rule, section rule two dash four dash ten A, prior discussion rule. Second. We have a motion of second for approval of item six A. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion approved. Welcome to the team.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this party Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, this probably not be the last time you see Walt up here. We have some updates coming up and, and he's spending about, committing about, um, three to four days every two weeks, uh, onsite, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, council will discuss and possibly approve of letter to be signed by the members of the City of Globe Council, containing comments and possibly questions to United States Department of the Air Force Notice of Intent to Prepare an Environmental Impact Statement for Regional Special Use Aerospace Optimization to Support Air Force Mission in Arizona.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, um, I did, I attempted to do some research on this and, and find out some answers. I, I didn't get that far. Um, this is basically the, the Air Force has, um, what they believe are antiquated, uh, requirements for flights in Arizona that the, the needs for training, uh, and this is fighter, fighter training and flight training, um, have, have changed. And so they have a comprehensive plan over all of Arizona as to expand both the, the altitudes that they fly, both high and low, down to five hundred feet in some areas, and the speeds that they fly, um, up to and, and above the speed of sound, which creates sonic booms and, uh, the dropping of flares and chaff, uh, in training, uh, that, that this takes on. Um, I think that, uh, we, I think all of us agree that we need to support the mission of the, uh, of the Air Force and, and, and their training needs. And, uh, we've all heard the F sixteen's go by, but we've also all heard a couple of pretty good sonic booms. I remember one in two thousand and sixteen where we had downtown, we had glass falling onto the sidewalk, onto the public. And, and so, so we, we, we have those concerns also. Um, I think it's respectful to, uh, um, they're asking for comments. Um, and we put together a draft letter, uh, asking for them, um, in support of one of the four alternatives. Um, uh, after thinking about this more, um, I think we might want to go ahead and, and actually put in the questions because I'm, I wasn't able to sit, I'm not able to sit here and, and answer many of the questions I and you have, um, on this. And so we might want to modify the letter and, and say, at this time, we support, um, uh, this alternative, but we'd like to receive more information on, on these certain questions and, and add that to the letter and, and pass that. Once we do this, we'll submit it to the, um, uh, through the process as recommended. And, and hopefully we can use that to, uh, to gain those, um, uh, those, those answers. But I, but we do have, we left the alternative, um, in, uh, empty. Um, I believe that number one alternative is no change whatsoever. Uh, number four alternative is the, the least impactful, um, change and it, and it's, it's muddled to see that, but it, it, it does affect, I think our, our area is called outlaw.
Right.
And so, um.
Or jackal, I think.
Right, so, uh, I don't know if you've had a, had a change and I, I think the first debate would be on, well, I, I, I opened it to you if we want to try to work through this and, and decide where everybody's at. But, uh, um, Bob Holmes, our, our lobbyist, uh, federal lobbyist and advisor, uh, recommends that we, we go with alternative four, um, but, but it's council's pleasure. And alternative four is the least impactful.
Go ahead Fernando.
Um, so I had a gentleman who came to visit me, he's a local resident. Um, I wanted to be an airplane pilot, but apparently they don't let you fly if you're colorblind, so I, I don't know that much about it. But he was a pilot and one of his main concerns is the local, um, base here for, at San Carlos Airport. Um, he said, he mentioned things about how when you approach your, you have to be at a thousand feet and then you have to drop below five hundred feet only when you go to land or something to that effect. And he was very concerned that with this airspace change, um, it could put anybody landing at that airport in jeopardy. And that's an unmanned, um, airport. Yeah, so you're kind of on your own when you fly in there. Um, and so, of course, I didn't know any of the answers. And so I just told him I would bring his concerns to the meeting and so that we could at least ask the questions. So there's, there's really, um, and the question is again, how does that affect local air traffic coming into the San Carlos Airport?
And so, and so I would, yeah, I think we'd like to add that is how does it, how does it impact local air traffic?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mayor.
The, there's a lot of questions that we don't get to ask the Air Force, because they'll put it under the guise or cloak of, of national security and I get that. I'm really concerned about certain points about the low altitude training that they wish to do here and an uptick in the training numbers that they want to do in the region. It doesn't matter where it occurs, uh, you know, within two seconds, they can be ten miles away. That's the speed they operate and train at. I have been at, uh, San Carlos Lake when they've come out of the mountains and zipped right over the lake within a split second. Um, they want to do more of that apparently in the region. I'm not clear in their mission that they want to put here. Um, I just don't feel that they, they have enough consideration to the communities that exist here. Um, I think that going to low altitude and training at low altitude, um, could involve, um, the setting of forest fires allegedly last summer that we saw. And that needs to come out somewhere in our comments to them. I don't see proof of, but I have heard that. The, the other is the, uh, increased, uh, speeds that they're running, which implies more sonic booms, which implies more damage to the communities involved here in this region. I, I won't speak for any other region, but we all know that we have had damage from those kinds of speeds. That does concern me a lot. So I guess, uh, a quite, general question, what's your rate of training numbers that may occur in this area? Um, a long time ago in my career, um, I learned that we don't control the airspace here in Arizona. It's controlled by the FAA and the Air Force operates under those provisions. Uh, you can complain about altitude, you can complain about anything, but we don't regulate that. So we're, we're literally at the mercy of the industry as well as the military. And with the proposed increase of training, yes, I would like to be part of that dialogue. And I don't know if they're proposing in that letter, a citizens review, a, a permanent citizens review committee to look at incidents in the future that do occur, that damage property or injure people possibly, or the U S Forest Service in state land. Um, I think there should be a review committee, an oversight committee. And I think we should get the, the federal delegation in on this review, because that's, that's our go-to. That's the only go-to that we have. And by the way, I was a government writer of memoranda throughout my career and have never seen from that career such an acronym laden document. And it obfuscated, it can cause confusion. And my advice to the Air Force is to find a better technical writer to kind of dumb it down for the general population. That's my advice to them, because when I was done with that, uh, document, I was confused. I said, where are they going with this and what is it that they really want? So from, from that point of view, I think better communication. Um, give us an idea of what your rate of use will be in all of the areas. Because they, they are proposing quite a different set of, of parameters now. And I am worried more about damage to the property of our citizens in this particular case. I wish they wouldn't do it here, but they're not going away. And we can't shove it off on another region, you know, take it to Yuma, it doesn't matter. They've chosen these three or four regions in Arizona, so we're gonna have to work with them. And that's all I want, is the dialogue to continue. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, what I can do is make sure that we, uh, we share this with our delegation. Whatever letter we do come forward, we'll include them with a copy of it.
Well, I'd like to add some comments into that also. Unfortunately, it sounds like, uh, we're not gonna get much, much of a timeline for, uh, comments, because I think it closes the first part of March. So it really doesn't give us a whole lot of time. You know, my concern and a lot of complaints I have heard is the noise, uh, the concern with the fire last year with the flares, that possibly starting the telegraph fire in Superior. Um, Fernando brought up, uh, an important part of it is, is the, uh, is the airport. You know, what does that do to our airport? Um, on February tenth, there was a crash of one of their jets in Buckeye. Luckily that didn't land in the populated area, landed where, uh, no, 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 nobody, no lives were lost. And, uh, but he, the pilot was able to eject and, and so that was part of their training mission. You know, I'm all for, uh, training for Air Force, but we need to be concerned with the noise. And, uh, you said that Mr. Holmes is recommending alternate four, but it rec, it, it receives back to alternate two and affects us with the sonic boom dropping this airspace and the flares too. So two and four are tied together.
Yeah, no, and, and three and four are just a variation of softening of two. And, and that's why I, I believe it's council, if, if, if it's council's wishes to, to offer for, um, no change, we, you know, that is, that is also your alternative to alternative one, which is no change, unless these issues are addressed, you know, properly. Now, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I will say that, that the deadline is to receive comments. Now, if these comments are received, I do believe that as part of the, the process, they need to address them somewhere in there. And so if, if, if we were to send something in after that deadline, it wouldn't be considered. If we send our questions in, which we're putting together right now prior to that deadline, I, I believe there'll be a requirement in the E A process for them to address those, uh, those questions. And we can at least learn if there's something in there that, that we, we didn't quite, you know, know what they meant. There's some other additional safety measures they can say, oh, don't worry about that because of this. Or at least if enough people complain about one thing, um, you know, maybe they'll say, we're gonna soften this, we're gonna adjust it because of the number of complaint, another of concerns, I wouldn't say complaints, but concerns. And so, so I, I think the process will continue as long as we make that, that March fourth deadline, which we have no, uh, no reason why we won't. Um, and then, but, but I don't know that I can get answers anytime soon, but I believe eventually we can get the answers to the questions you pose here.
And Paul, I think if we don't get answers, my support, my sole support would be alternate one where there, there is no change. You know, it's a shame that they didn't, uh, hold some kind of public hearing in, uh, because we're the Jackal region and, and a big part of it. And they didn't, they held a hearing in Superior and that was a council meeting night. And the rest, they had five other hearings that were two hours away from Globe. Why can't they, why, why couldn't they have held a, um, a hearing in the San Carlos, the Globe Miami area where the public had the opportunity to go talk to the people?
Two, three, four, five.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'm, I'm worried with what Mayor is saying. This is kind of a, a quick decision. I've heard on the radio actually about J V and Kiko, their concerns, not theirs, but several people that listen to them. And I think they have a right to speak, to at least, uh, get their word out and their concerns. And I've worked for the government for thirty-five years and I understand the region and everything, what they're doing, but the public does have the right to speak out. And I think you're right, we should have had a public hearing and we're not. So I think it'd be inter, or a good idea to maybe reach out to the radio stations and what have you and say, you know, what are your concerns?
Well, I.
I know there's a timeline, March fourth is.
Yeah, no, I, and I think, I think we could just, um, we can put something in and, and let people know the deadline is approaching and here is a method of submitting your comments. I don't, I don't think that we should, um, I think we really have a chance to submit our comments and we encourage others who have concerns that there is a window to submit those comments, not necessarily what their comment should be. I should have no problem with that. But I, but we can at least let people know that the deadline is fast approaching.
Why is it so quick though? Why?
Um.
It's the government.
Right.
There is a website, there is a website you can go to to submit a comment.
I think I've talked to you about this, Mayor, is the effects on our property values, that what we're trying to do, everything we're trying to do to bring people to Globe, if, if this continues to happen, it's just going to diminish everything that we've done. Um, who wants to live in a town where the supersonic or subsonic booms are happening all night, day and night? I mean, have hours of, have their hours expanded during these times? I mean, have they even discussed their hours of when they would be doing these trainings or are we having this all night?
Right, and so, well, but that would be the, even, even if you're gonna do sonic booms, let's, let's do some training hours. I know that, I know that Luke has a policy where they don't launch training flights any later than noon. Uh, they, they're six in the morning to noon, I think that's partially, partially because of the heat also. But, um, but that would be, that would be helpful to us to know, are you gonna be doing sonic booms at night?
Didn't we have a whole school closed because of a sonic boom?
I think the Walmart, the, the ceiling fell down.
Well, they went under lockdown, didn't they? Because they didn't know what was going on, one of the school districts closed.
And, and we, and we did contact David Mathis and they said there is somebody that was, I don't know how to say this.
I have a hard time, even though I, I support military training, I support training in all aspects of it. I, and don't get me wrong, but with technology that we have today, I don't understand why you have to send flares into a forest that is dry. It's, it's, it's dry, I mean, I under, I mean, there's uninhabited land all over the place that they could be doing this at.
And, and like I say, I'm, I've never seen anything confirm or deny. It's, it's an open question about, um, some of the, the, some of the concerns about the flares. And that's another open question is are the, do the flares create a fire hazard? You know, are they putting our, our force?
It's gonna be light, it's gonna be a drone, can it? I mean, there's alternatives to training.
We, we did have a, we did have an incident where someone found an un-ignited flare and put it there.
Remember, then downtown got shut down and all the things.
Yeah, and so they opened up the trunk, there it was, and everybody was like abandoned, evacuated. And, and they came and got it and they're, they sent the hazmat people up and got it from us and that was nice. Um, so the schedule of training and the schedule of the booms, um.
And what, if any increases to property values have the, as other community, have other communities seen that?
I, I think that in itself is the question, how will there be an impact on property values because of this change?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a new business item, uh, it's not gonna make it back, uh, for our next meeting before the closing of the comment period. So is this something that will be presented or sent to council to, to review?
Um, yes, we're, we're gonna take whatever, whatever we come up with here, gonna add it and, and, and send it real quick and make sure we get this out. But, um, Linda, I have not been able to read your text. You, do you want to share and, and just come down? Linda has gotten some additional communication, additional information. So while I read her text, she's gonna talk to you about it.
So, so in the last few days, we've had a lot of communication with our, our mining partners in the community. And they, they all shared that they have not, they did not receive notification as the city did, the letter that is included in the agenda packet. And so actually they became aware of it, Mayor, when you mentioned it during the E D C meeting, uh, last week or the week before. And so they've been in, going in turbo mode, trying to, uh, draft their comments. Uh, one, one advisement that we did receive from one of, um, uh, the mine, from a mining leadership team is that any, any point that we, we do not make during this public comment process is not going to be pursued in the E I S process. So it's very important that, that we identify any and all concerns during this, this comment period. Um, he had sent me a bulleted list that he, after, after reading our draft that was included in our agenda packet, that these, these are, um, seven points that he would recommend that we consider, uh, adding to, to our letter. I don't know if you would like me to read that now, or is this?
Yeah, please do. No, I, Linda, I think these are all good, go ahead and, and share them with council. And council, uh, share with us if you think you'd like to have these additional points included in our communication.
So, I, I'm gonna read it verbatim. After looking over the E I S documents, we have determined that we will provide comments before the public scoping window closes on March fourth. We intend to comment that the proposed action and several of the proposed alternatives relative to the outlaw airspace will or may have a detrimental effect on several N I B A aspects. One, the five hundred foot floor for the outlaw airspace is too low for co-use by P V M C for, for drone surveys. So this, these are drones that this company uses to monitor activity on their site. The, the effects, uh, to wildlife in the Pennam Creek watershed and superstition wilderness needs to be analyzed. Uh, three, the effect of a supersonic flight as low as five thousand feet on the stability of open pit walls and tailings impoundments in the area needs to be analyzed. Uh, four, the potential to start a fire from lowering the release elevation of flares needs to be carefully analyzed. Five, the effect of increased noise needs to be thoroughly analyzed. Six, the effect of record. Six, the effect of recreation and wilderness needs to be analyzed. And seven, the effect on socionomic conditions needs to be carefully analyzed, particularly with respect to property values by the expanded hours of operation and the lower floor for both subsonic and supersonic flight.
Thing we've discussed.
Uh huh.
Yes. Very good, let's go with it.
Okay.
Add it to it.
We'll have yours and then we'll add those seven into the document that we brought forth tonight.
And we're doing alternative one?
That will be, when you, motion and second. What's that? One is no change?
No change.
One is no change, yes. Whoever makes the motion and second, please vote on that. Include that in your motion and we'll determine that council is fully
And then we'll pull through all the questions that have just been brought up.
You'll include those questions too?
Yes, I'll include the ones that Linda just shared with council, all seven of them.
This was of note by several of the different companies that had discussed this. This was actually put in writing that they have not seen anywhere any mention on extent or frequency changes of use of the airspace. And that was something that council did mention. And so it is not, it is not mentioned in any of the communication that they've seen.
Good.
Can we communicate that with the town of Miami? I did share some texts with Mica, city manager. He wanted to see what our outcome was on our request and our letter. So, because he heard it was on our agenda tonight.
No, give me 24 hours, put this together and then we'll get a copy to him because there is time is of the essence.
One other concern that I think we'd have in our community, because we're mining, we have a lot of tailings dam. Is there an effect with the sonic boom? You know, we've had the failure in Brazil and that's why the testing is going on at BHP. Is there any, I don't know, would that affect maybe a break in the tailing stand that, you know, could cause damage to our community?
I asked the same question. And because most of the mines are doing active blasting, they don't believe so. That doesn't mean that it couldn't impact. And again, the person I was talking to is a technical expert. And they're saying that maybe the sound waves that it's in the direction in which it's coming is different than what they are emitting from the site. So they couldn't say, you know, with complete confidence that it would not impact the integrity of their tailings facilities.
But Mr. Mayor, members of council, if we don't mention that though, by mentioning it, then hopefully they will
But I think one of the seven items said something about ground vibration or something like that. So that would probably be under that.
Fernando?
Since this came to light, I was driving home last week and I was going through Devil's Canyon, coming back to Globe. And two jets just, I mean, they were probably like 200 feet over the road and they're just
Right down the canyon.
And I was like, yeah, so I was surprised because I've seen them around, but usually they're higher up, but they were right over the highway.
That's crazy.
Yeah, kind of neat, but but not.
Make you jump any curve?
I just hope they don't think I'm a bad guy.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, they say there are two types of fighter pilots. There are old fighter pilots and there are bold fighter pilots. And so I think you went across a couple of bold ones.
Old and bold.
Yeah, maybe not the
Now, we want a motion on an alternative today or?
I would like that because we're not going to have time to really come back and do this. So, because, and I don't believe I'll be able to get any questions, any of these, hardly any of these answered by the time. And so, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would request that you make a decision on whether alternative one or alternative four. And I believe it's, this is, you're an elected body to make decisions. And I think that, what you think is the wise one? I think we're treating, we're showing our fairness, but there's definitely a lack of information and there's no reason why doing
Okay, let's go with it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I make a motion to approve a letter to be signed by the members of the City of Globe's City Council containing comments and possible questions as discussed tonight. To the United States Department of the Air Force, notice of intent to prepare an environmental impact statement for regional special use airspace optimization to support air force missions in Arizona and specifically identifying alternative one as our choice.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to second for creating a letter supporting alternative one. Is there any further questions? Now, even alternative one, we will submit our questions, all right?
Oh, yeah.
Still so, okay.
And we will say, given the lack of information, at this point, we support one. Given the lack of information with answers, we may, the letter reads that we may alter, we may change.
Mr. Mayor, just one point of comment before we close this. Chance of an airplane crash is rare, even from the military. But it has occurred in Hila County. Helicopter crashed during a search and rescue up in Young, Arizona about 15 years ago. They were called out by the county and the air force elected to go into a certain canyon. There was very, and you remember this, there was very little
Fire was there, yes.
Very little lift when the pilot of that Blackhawk decided to go into that canyon. Now, it's a pilot's decision when it comes to search and rescue and it was an SAR event. But they did lose lift and that particular Blackhawk crashed. And there was a long inquiry made by the air force questioning the search and rescue agencies, including the sheriff's office and the City of Globe, of why they allowed the pilot to go down there. Well, it's the pilot's call, it's not ours. So the question I have to the air force in this particular set of circumstances that they are presenting is, our people, our fire and police in that kind of an instance would be responding at the request of probably the sheriff's office. And so we would like consideration about that kind of rare event in the City of Globe or Hila County on exercising with our personnel to that end, if there is a crash in the region. Because they will be called out by mutual aid agreements, which we're about to talk about on the CWPP plan. But it has happened, we do have precedents. And the responding agencies essentially, and I don't have record of that from the air force, but essentially those agencies were raked over the coals because they called out a Blackhawk helicopter out of Tucson. I don't want to put the city in jeopardy again on a search and rescue in the city or the county. We need to have them on notice that we would like for them to exercise with our agencies in Hila County as well as the City of Globe, so that we're all on the same page when it does happen. I hope it never does. But once you have one, you learn a lot from it. And I know the mayor is nodding his head over there because he was in the middle of it, so is my brother-in-law. But the point is, if they're going to be doing these exercises in this county and the entire region, they need to practice with this in a search and rescue exercise and educate our people on what the risks are. Just like the risks are about responding to electric automobiles that are being run all over the nation. We need more training and we need to work with them. And I think that's the last comment I need to make, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, one quick comment. There is a, my dad was a fighter pilot and I've heard this story many times, but there is a pilot's creed that if you have to, if you need to get out of your airplane, you point it or make sure that it's going to hit a non-populated area, even to the point where if you have to ride it down, you have to ride it down. But pilots will, commercial, private, military, they will always ride it down until they can be as safe as possible that it's not going to hit a populated area. That is something they pride themselves on. But doesn't mean that accidents can't happen.
No.
And doesn't mean that, you know, a series of events, you know, can lead to that.
Yeah, and this incident was 20-plus years. I think in two of our firefighters were on that helicopter when it went down and we're lucky we didn't lose anybody.
That helicopter was sent out not as a training exercise, but as a
No, it was a rescue of a gentleman and towards Young, up in Young. Yep. So I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass. Item C, we have consideration to approve resolution number 1850. Approving the Southern Hila County Wildfire Protection Plan and Request to Waive 2-4-2A Prior Discussion Rule, Chief Robinson. Ms. Shelley, can you read resolution 1850? Thanks for attending.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 1850, a resolution of the City of Globe, County of Hila, State of Arizona, approving the Southern Hila County Wildfire Protection Plan. His counsel, please with that reading.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Over the course of the last several months, the work group associated with putting together the Southern Hila County Wildfire Protection Plan has been meeting, discussing not only, you know, the previous plan, but also the events that we've experienced over the last, over the course of the last year related to wildfires and the effects of wildfires in the community. And working to update this plan that affects all of Southern Hila County. Because of the nature of Hila County, you know, we do a plan for the north, we do a plan for the south. The purpose of the plan is to identify what the risks are, what level of risk there is, what resources are available and what mitigation measures can be used within the communities to reduce the threat of wildfire. Those mitigation measures include fuel treatments. They include the, for instance, the Payson area put in to affect a wildland urban interface code, property code, that deals with how do we, not only how do we maintain our properties, how do property owners maintain properties, but how do we build properties to be more wildfire resistant? In 2009, the governor required the state Department of Forestry to go through and assess the risk of over 200 communities within the state. Just on a note, for the majority of the Cobra Valley area, including the City of Globe, Town of Miami, and those outlying areas within the community, all of those areas were rated at a high risk. Not only for the types of fuels, it takes into account, you know, what resources are there, what types of fuels are there? How are things constructed there? We know we deal with challenging terrain. We know we deal with, we tend to deal with light and brushy fuels that tend to move very quickly when it comes to wildfires. So with that, we have put together a plan. Some of the things maybe that you might see different if you were to go back and review previous plans versus this plan. Number one, some of the mitigation projects that are proposed, that are being looked at as potential for opportunities to reduce the threat of wildfire in certain areas of the community. Also, we took into account post-fire effects such as flooding. That's one thing that wasn't in the previous plan, that we obviously know it can have a significant impact. We saw it in our own community, we've seen it in other communities. The Flagstaff community is dealing with that as well. The plan tonight is before you for your approval. Once all the stakeholders have signed on and as approved, then this plan would in turn be adopted by Hila County. With that adoption, then the Hila County Emergency Management Department assumes responsibility for regular updates with the work group to see where we're at in terms of the goals that were set as that plan, where we've done mitigation measures. One of the big things that this plan also does is it gives us a mechanism to apply for funding. When we look at mitigation, we look at mitigation plans. For instance, there's a mitigation plan that's proposed for the high desert area that's included as part of this. It is in very preliminary, in very preliminary stages of planning. But it is there and was proposed. With funding that's been released to the state and to federal partners as a result of the Healthy Forest Initiative, you know, there are a lot more potential opportunities to do mitigation, to do some of the things that need to be done within our communities to make them more wildfire resilient. With that, if I can answer any questions that you may have, I'm more than willing to do so.
Mr. Mayor, Gary, did the county include Hayden and Winkleman in this plan?
We worked to try and include Hayden and Winkleman in the plan. They are included in identifying of resources to the extent that they could get information from them.
Okay.
There was some challenge and some, currently, under the current draft that I have, some missing information that they have been unable to attain as of yet. But we are working to do that, yes.
Okay, thank you, Gary. In the last few months, I've had to drive, because of the bridge construction, through that region and coming out to the other side on Superior. And what concerned me the most was not the burned portion, we know about that, but the unburned part of the forest and the high desert and the effects that we still have to face going into another fire season. That concerns me a great deal because we don't know enough about the unburned portions that we do, because the bear team worked on that forest on the burned area of the fires. So this is a good document for planning and it's region-wide. I have to assume that we have dialogue with San Carlos on this also?
They are included in the plan, yes.
Okay, that's very important because they're on the eastern edge and we have to work with them on this particular subject as well. So it looks good, I'm very pleased with it. It needed an update and so it looks like it's covering all the bases now. And is funding going to be available through the Division of Emergency Management and the forestry on mitigation?
There is, there was a lot of funding that was released as part of the Healthy Forest Initiative and is being proposed over the course of the next 10 years. The mayor and I had the opportunity to attend a release from the Tonno National Forest regarding that funding. And there is a significant amount. There's also mechanisms that have been put in place that previously didn't exist for cooperation, such as between, where you have entities that border other entities, such as state and federal, where mitigation projects were being looked at. But because they potentially moved on to another adjoining landowner or land management agency responsibility, it made it difficult to do so. They've put in place mechanisms now that allow for, allow for much more seamless cooperation when it comes to those type of things where, you know, a state, a state wildland crew from Department of Forestry and Fire Management could potentially do mitigation work on a portion of federal property or on a portion of BLM property, something like that, where that mechanism didn't exist before.
I guess the last question I have is, will the county be posting this on their website for easy access once it's finally approved?
I have no doubt they will.
I would like to be able to point that out to the public and please let us know when it's available. Because I do have a lot of people come up and ask, you know, what's the county doing about this or that regarding the next wildland fire season? And I'd like to be able to point them to a seminal document like this. Go read the document and there's the planning you can read quickly. And it's another piece of that puzzle for wildland fire. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions, comments? Chief, I want to thank you and the group for taking the time. I know it's a long process to update this plan. I think it was established probably seven-plus years ago and it needed to be updated, I think, for that. Unfortunately, a lot of the projects that were identified didn't have funding. But with this new initiative and the 10-year plan that was proposed that we attended, we're hoping that millions of dollars come to our area to be able to do some of these mitigation burns, you know, in the off-season.
That includes, you know, that includes mechanisms for burning, for mechanical thinning, for a number of different things that will hopefully, you know, that was the For Forests Initiative, one of the struggles they had was, has always been, how do we do it affordably or how do we find the money to do it? That's one of the things that they've done now as a result of the impacts that we've seen to communities throughout the state.
Any other questions, comments?
If there's no other questions or comments, I move to adopt resolution number 1850 and approve the Southern Hila County Wildfire Protection Plan.
Second.
You want to waive the rule on that because it's a new business?
And I'll waive the rule.
We have a motion to second for approval of resolution number 1850. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion pass. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Go to action items. Item A, consideration to approve the revised ordinance number 878 and Resolution Number 1849, adopting by reference a rezoning map and planned area development pad for property located at 450 South Hill Street. Shelley, can you read ordinance 878, please, and Resolution 1849?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance Number 878, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Globe amending the zoning ordinance of the city by amending the city of Globe zoning map to apply a planned area development overlay zoning district over the existing C3 central commercial zoning district to allow multiple family land use for a maximum of 64 dwellings, no on-site parking requirements, and reduce minimum building setbacks of a total of more or less .79 acres of land located at 450 South Hill Street in the city of Globe, county of Hila, state of Arizona. Is Council pleased with that reading?
Yes.
Resolution Number 1849, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Globe, Arizona declaring as a public record that certain documents filed with the city clerk and entitled Hill Street School Planned Area Development. Is Council pleased with that reading?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. At the February 8th council meeting, council approved ordinance Number 878, which adopted a rezoning request and planned area development plan for the Hill Street, Hill Street School property located at 450 South Hill Street. State law requires that ordinances, once they're approved by the legislative body, be published in the local newspaper for two weeks, for a period of two consecutive weeks. Ordinance Number 878, as it was written, had the planned area development, which is a 30-page document, attached as an exhibit, and it's too large, large to publish in the newspaper, so state law does allow the adoption by reference, which would make the planned area development document a public record, but the resolution itself would not have to be published, and so this is just kind of a housekeeping item. The legislature, the legislative action doesn't, this doesn't change the legislative, legislative action that council approved, the rezoning request. Just for publication purposes.
Mayor, if there's no discussion or comments, I would move to approve the modifications.
Motion in a second for approval of the modifications for the resolution. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Item B, consideration discussion to ratify purchase order number 22-0135 issued to Robert Horn Ford in the amount of $54,318.05 to secure ordering a 2022 Ford F-150 XLT for the wastewater department and waive section 24, that 2-4-10A, prior discussion rule. Funds have been budgeted in account number 51-80-5200 wastewater capital outlay equipment. John?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, all of our departments are kind of trying to work on our fleet and our needs and and, you know, bring those up to where we need to be. Public Works is no different. In this current budget here, we had put in for three different vehicles. This would be the second purchase, and that we proved another in November, which we're still waiting on for delivery. It's hopefully it's coming in in March. We put this bid out with our finance department in in hopes to get this ordered. This is kind of one of those, another one of those, for instance, is that not all the, there's a shortage of vehicles coming out of the factory, and they're actually kind of pre-ordering with the most recent contact with the truck that we ordered preliminary, the first one, was, you know, they're a few months out. This vehicle here is at least six to eight weeks out. But this one's not as specific as the first one we ordered. The first one was a service body. This one would be a four-wheel drive pickup crew cab. One of the main reasons we're looking at doing the four-wheel drives is you all know what the storms and the rains we had currently. We had a lot of our trucks stuck, you know, and mine was one of the very few that could get in and out of those areas. Paul witnessed that even with Gary on those trips, and that's where that argument kind of finally got solved when you got vehicles stuck on the side of the road. So you see a difference as far as the crew cabs. Tomorrow, we're sending a couple of crew members or staff to training, and we're actually going to utilize one of the ones that the PD issued to us that they discontinued off of there once they received their newer vehicle. So it it's just basically trying to get our fleet up into, you know, the the needs of, you know, these areas. Most of the, most of the time when you see these types of purchases and even with their other municipalities, counties, the ADOT, they usually won't go too stray far off of getting four-wheel drive. So you'll see a difference in the fluctuation in pricing what we've dealt with before, but that's why.
So, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, we, I believe Jeannie said she put out 13, sent this request to 13 agencies, 13 dealerships, including McSpadden. This Robert Horn Ford, which I believe is in Peoria, is the only one that that responded, and since they responded, we wanted to confirm and and lock it in, so that is why we're ratifying this. We, we actually had the mayor sign the the document and make sure that we got that in there before somebody else got access to it. And so that's what we have to do. If we're going to hire somebody, we got to hire them now. If we're going to buy something, we got to buy it now before something else happens.
And Paul, when I signed that late last week or last week sometime, that was a question I asked, was there any local bidders? And this was the only one, Jeannie told me this is the only one that responded to to the bid, so I wanted to make sure that the locals had opportunity.
We sent it out to McSpadden, they have kind of indicated that that they wouldn't be responding to that many of these, but we'll always check with them. And I think that they're, you know, they're, they're running, you know, they're doing their best to get the 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 vehicles. We're, you know, by whatever means necessary, we're trying to find these vehicles.
And Mayor, if I may add, a year ago when we actually, for budget purposes, we did some research even with the local vendor, that that time they give us some, you know, some quote, they actually give us a quote and give us some pricing, but that was more than a year ago, and that was going into the budget cycle so we could, you know, put in for these vehicles. But once we put this bid out, at that time, they did not respond.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, John, just a couple of questions. Um, what, what does our fleet, our Public Works fleet look like as far as numbers? What's our just a round number, I don't need to be exact, but are we somewhere around 20 units?
Twenty, twenty units. You know, one of, one of the third vehicles we would be looking towards, I mean, this one comes off the top of my head, is like our meter reader truck. That gets driven all day, every day. That one's pushing over 275,000 miles on it, and it's, it burns oil. You know, the the truck that actually we're, we're putting in for on this, this bid is actually going to be replacing, going towards the sewer plant, actually be going towards Vince. He crosses the creek all the time, you know, in any, any kind of weather. We don't encourage anybody crossing the creek with water flowing, but it gets muddy and that, we've all been down that road. His vehicle will be repurposed. So right now, there's actually at least 20 vehicles that we feel are fairly sound.
Okay, thank you. And a follow-up, if I may? And Paul, this may be, may be more directed towards you, but, you know, we've, we've had some success in leasing vehicles. So if you can explain leasing versus purchasing in in this particular setting in this department, because obviously we're looking for the best value. I'm not saying a purchase is not the way to go, but we've seen success in in our police department in in the leasing program as well.
Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, Councilman Rios, I I think a lot of it on our general fund, ongoing costs, you have your one-time, if you buy it, you have one-time costs. You have, if you lease it, you have these ongoing costs. With the on, with the leasing, you you make sure you have rotation of new vehicles, and you keep that that cycling through, and we've been very happy to do that with police, first with police. Now we're starting to do that with with fire. But especially with enterprise, and John, is this an enterprise or is this a?
This is an enterprise.
It's the enterprise. We have those capital funds there, and and so we can, we can use those funds to to go in and equip the fleet that way. And so in the enterprise funds, we tend to go with a, with an outright purchase. We just, I think there are like three of those big F-450s and stuff. Didn't Jeannie say we just finally got the leases done on those?
Yes.
Yeah, we had three that she was so happy to write the last check. I think she paid them off a tad bit early. But it's something, but the, but to your point, it's something we're going to be looking at. We're actually looking at doing a little bit of analysis on on fleet and and lease versus purchase. Our our largest asset for the city is, of course, people. But our second largest are these, are the the stable of vehicles we have in all departments, and and making sure that we're, you know, doing proper rotation. I would say that sometimes we tend to hang on too long to vehicles, and and it would be better to to just have a a a plan. And we've had five-year plans before, but a plan to to do that, rotate out. Whether we do it through lease or purchase, we still need to to get them rotated out. And one thing John had told me is you can take trucks from out, from outside of Public Works and and rotate them into Public Works, but pulling from Public Works in and taking anywhere else is probably not a good.
Yeah, they're done.
They're usually done.
Yeah, they're done. No, well, 200,000 miles later, I would, I don't know who you're going to get to to drive that.
That's one of the things we've been.
And John, we, we have a list of of vehicles that we want to auction off, I believe. Right. And and so I I know that that's been been going down there. We have an auction site, but I I think it's lost momentum during the the pandemic.
Yeah, we've, we've kind of made a few efforts at that, but I think we need to clean our yard up some more, too, so, because a lot of times it is misleading when you come into our yard. It's hard to tell which ones are the ones that are still riding and which ones are the ones we're auctioning off.
Well, oh, go ahead. You know, just, just through my experience and and what I do and and the business I manage, you know, our vehicles don't go over 100,000 miles before they're swapped out. It's, you know, they're, we consider them done because they're, obviously you know that they're going to start failing. And so now you're paying the cost of of, you know, the repairs and things like that. So it seems to, it just seems to be advantageous because it cuts down on all your maintenance costs. And and you know, vehicles now, you know, transmission could be $7,000. A motor, you know, 5,000. So that's why the question. I'm not, I'm not trying to give you direction. I just, you know, I I have another perception or another view of of how those fleets can get turned over and still maintain their stability, and that, just want to plant the seed.
Councilman, if I can add on to that, one of the things we did looking at this whole plan, and I, Chief Walters have actually touched on this, is as vehicles are aging, where they're not actually going to be utilized for the public safety aspect of it, then we can actually, just like Paul mentioned, those were actually go to Public Works. As you see, they're getting some of the pickup trucks and some of the more sport utility vehicles. Those could still be utilized, whether it be meter reading or some of the other trucks. We just traditionally have not. We've gone to ADOT straight surplus, purchased vehicles that were already on there, rebuild. So that's where we're kind of trying to bring that up to shore.
And I get, you know, if, you know, this is enterprise, so we're talking a totally different budget, so. I get it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor and Members of, oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, with your permission, John, could you give me a tour of the, of your yard? That's the one facility I haven't seen yet. So just at your convenience, I'll run over and you can, you can, you can tell me what's good and what's bad. So I'd appreciate that.
Grab that meter reader truck.
Yeah.
You know, just to add on, we still have a pickup truck that was being utilized about two years ago that the mayor, actually, was one of the, the old Ford. I think that was a 1970s.
That was a rescue truck.
Yes. That's still up there.
Still here. Prigato's truck.
Oh, the shocks on that thing.
Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, the last thing I want to say is we did put money in the budget this year to to actually take a look at fleet operations and organizational assessment of how we purchase and how we maintain and the balance. We've been doing some experimenting on on that distance between using Public Works internally and then using some of the local vendors, using the dealerships, using 60 motors and things like that. And so we still intend to complete that evaluation of fleet services and and see what the the sweet point is as to how we handle this very large asset or body of assets.
Just one comment, talking about fleet, too, Paul, on on any emergency vehicles, police, fire. We really need to look at getting, utilizing certified mechanics for emergency vehicles and not just a regular mechanic. There's a lot of liability involved in in utilizing just any mechanic shop for for emergency vehicles.
And Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, that's actually an issue that came up in in our department-wide conversations. And we are actually, Gary had a, was showing around a person that that offers that service. We're going to be looking, getting some prices for the upcoming year as to what it would take to contract out with a certified public, public safety. Is it, is it, they do just fire? So they specialize in fire and and they have all the certifications and the knowledge and and that. Because it's, it's kind of unfair to to load so much. I mean, we we've grown, but I don't know that our fleet department has grown that much. And and so if if we can take those specialized services and and put them out, we'd probably be looking at something coming forward in the budget cycle on that.
What about training our own people?
That would be, if we look at the organizational assessment, we would look at both that way of hiring, hiring a certified person. I I believe that at some point we'll be there, where we hire a certified master mechanic for for fire trucks only. But I don't, again, it's the same thing. I don't know that we would have the work for everybody, right, for a full-time person, but having the ability of somebody that can come in and work with us, we're also may partner with with Tri-City on on using that contract, so you don't have the 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 upcharge and the the back and forth charges from the, from the valley. And so we're, we'll look at all those combinations, but I was going to say, no, it's, that's, that's the idea. We need to see what our options are, decide what we believe would be the best, bring that forward to council, and 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 then see where the money pans out.
Mayor and Council, if I may add, just, we, our mechanics up at the fleet shop do have different certifications, but as you know, it's just like electronics, every year a vehicle comes out. There's just continuous training. I just want to make sure that we do, just like Councilman Pastor mentioned, we do have the continuous training for our staff as well.
Mr. Mayor, if there are, I'm sorry. If there are other further discussion, I I move to ratify purchase number order, I'm sorry, purchase order number 22-0135 issued to Robert Horn Ford Ford in the amount of $54,318.05 to secure ordering a 2022 Ford F-150 XLT for the wastewater department. Request to waive section 2-4-10A, prior discussion rule. Funds have been budgeted in account 51-80-52000 wastewater capital outlay equipment.
Second. Motion second for approval of item 7B. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Thank you, John.
This is a four-by-four, right?
Yes.
Okay. Didn't see it in the motion.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's not in there. It is. Item C, discussion and consideration to issue invitation for bid IFB Number CS-2022-0005 for the WWTP Clarifier Rehab Project with funds to come from account number 51-80-52200 wastewater capital outlay construction. Jerry or Vince?
Mr. Mayor, I think we're starting with Vince and Jerry's there if you have follow-up questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're asking for your permission to go out to bid for a project down at the wastewater plant. This is to rehab our clarifiers down there. We'll be going over all the clarifiers, replacing the wear parts, the motors, blasting and re-coating everything.
Questions are coming? This is a continuation of the upgrade of the, of the, that's why it's an action item tonight, then, right? Just continuation of
Correct.
of all the upgrades. Okay.
Right.
Ready?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vince, I don't want to put you on the spot, but just so that our public understands what a clarifier is, can you explain in just general detail?
Yeah, a clarifier allows the solids to settle out of the clean water, and the clean water overflows and goes out and exits the plant. The solid, the solids hit a pump and come back to the oxidation ditch where they continue to process.
Okay, so it separates the solids from?
The clean water, the water, yeah.
Water being processed.
Right.
All right, thank you. That was, that was a test on the question. I mean, there was a question on the test, right?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, he does bring jars of it to the Citizens Academy. So if you want to see it up close and personal, he can bring you a jar if you'd like.
Thank you.
They can't tell the difference between the tap water and the effluent, so it's pretty clean.
Mayor, if there's no other question, further questions or comments, I motion to approve the issuance of invitation for bid IFB number CS-2022-005 for the wastewater treatment plant clarifier rehab project with funds to come out of account number 51-80-52200 wastewater capital outlay construction.
Second. Motion to second for approval of item 7C. Is there any further discussion?
Before you go, Jerry, did, did you have anything to add?
Sorry, Jerry.
I is.
Nope. You're on mute.
Jerry?
Here he goes.
Okay. Nice fan there.
It's a good thing you're here, Vince. Okay, we got thumbs up.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it.
We'll get you a tripod here.
His fingers can't touch the button.
Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstaining? Motion passed. Thank you, Vince.
Saved the day, Vince.
Item 8 is late agenda items.
And we have nothing to add for late agenda.
Item 9, second call to the public. Do we have anybody online or phone?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a comment in response to the housing study that was presented. This is from Jamie Green. She said, a few of the demographics referred to in the health mapping report for Hila County are tied to social detriments of health. Excuse me, affordable housing, income stability and opportunity, food insecurity and access, healthcare, education and transportation. Thank you for starting to take the time to address these crucial disparities that can be overcome in our community.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I believe Jamie Green is the new library board?
Yes.
Yes. Name sounds familiar.
And she'll be participating in the Citizens Academy also.
Any others?
No, nothing on the email.
Scheduling the meetings?
Uh, we saw my, we had an email out, I think we have, that came out, I think Friday night. We're good.
Consideration of future agenda items?
And on that, we were hoping to wait until we have the the March 3rd discussion about that draft policy on future agenda items and the work groups before we go too deep into future agenda items. But and so I apologize if we haven't, we we have a meeting set up to deal with that. So but but if there's something pressing council wants to bring up, we can do that.
Okay, we do have E session tonight?
We do have E session.
So have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion made.
Second.
Motion to second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
And for, and Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, when we return to E session, there's no additional action that's requested or required or or scheduled. And I need both Linda and Gary to to stay.
Okay.